We are also now streaming live on YouTube because we have had so many people interested. This is our first foray with that, so we're learning all kinds of things during this time. Welcome Kim from Ohio. Laura from Iowa, Daisy from Pennsylvania. Welcome everyone. We have some people from Texas, Indiana, joining us. Kaylee from Georgia, more from North Carolina, and I didn't know there was a Portland, Texas. Happy to have you join us, Margaret. And we have someone from Emmett, Idaho. Welcome Jennifer. Others from Virginia, Texas, Pullman, Washington, working at the Moscow Library. Hello Bailey, nice to have you join us today. Those of you that are just joining on, feel free to in the chat box. Give us a hello, tell us your name and from where you're joining us. We have people all across the US as well as several of us here in Idaho. Sunshine in Idaho Falls Mallory, happy to hear that. We like the sunshine. Oh, Alex from St. Cloud, Minnesota had snow this morning. Oh, somehow it's not surprising being from Minnesota. Oh, welcome Doreen from Prairie River Library, fantastic, and Katie from Idaho Falls. Hello friends from Delaware, Missouri, Virginia, South Dakota. This is everyone. Hello Amy from Idaho Falls, welcome. We have another friend from St. Cloud, Minnesota. Sunshine in Wilkes Barre, we have friends from Connecticut, Seattle, North Carolina. Okay. Welcome everyone. We have just a couple more minutes, so we have our overflow happening on YouTube as well as those of you that were able to get into the webinar room here. And we will be getting in about one minute. I'm going to go ahead and hit the record. Well, thanks everyone for joining us today. My name is Tammy Holly House and I would like to welcome you to this special edition of our Info to Go sessions here at the Idaho Commission for Library. This session is very timely and entitled Self-Care During a Pandemic. At we are recording this webinar so that persons who weren't able to attend can view it later on at our website. Those of you that are joining us, you will receive or that registered for this, you will be receiving an email with that link in it at a later date. All of our participants have been muted. We have such a large number joining us today that to ensure the sound quality, we have chosen to do that, but we encourage you to use the chat box to ask questions. We have a staff member monitoring the chat box both in the Zoom webinar and also the live overflow in YouTube. So feel free to use that to ask us questions as we go along. So on behalf of the Idaho Commission for Libraries here, myself in Boise, Idaho, and in conjunction with one of our great funding partners, the Institute of Museum and Library Services, it's our great pleasure to bring this webinar to you today. And I now would like to introduce to you our continuing education consultant here at the Idaho Commission for Libraries. Her name is Annie Gaines and she will be our great presenter today. So Annie, if you would like to take it away.
Okay, sounds good. Can everybody hear me? Okay. Awesome. Okay, so hi, everybody, and welcome to self-care during a pandemic. I know it's been a really hectic week. And a really hectic day probably. So what I would like to do is take 30 seconds or so to take a few deep breaths, all of us together, and stretch your arms up over your head and lean over to one side for a few seconds. And lean back over to the other side for a few seconds. Just to kind of take a moment before we get going. Thank you Tammy for demonstrating. Alright. So hello, my name is Annie Gaines and I am the Continuing Education Consultant at the Idaho Commission for Libraries. I became a self-care advocate over the past decade or so as I figured out how to navigate my own mental and emotional health while navigating grad school, becoming a professional, navigating various personal challenges and big life changes. I'm a pretty open person and so I don't mind sharing with you all that I have anxiety and depression, the hall and oats of mental health disorders. And it is through these lines that I first started wrestling with the idea of self-care. So what is self-care? Forgive me if you've heard this analogy before, but when you're on an airplane and the flight attendant is giving the plane the safety talk, they always explain that should the cabin lose pressure, oxygen masks will drop from the overhead area. Please place the mask over your own mouth and nose before assisting others. I've usually noticed that they they often visually show a parent putting on their own mask first before helping their child put on the mask. This is one analogy of self-care, prioritizing your own health and wellbeing first so that you can help others later. And that totally makes sense, but that's just one analogy. Another way to think about self-care is as a scuba diver. Just to stick with me here, so scuba divers use oxygen tanks to help them survive in the ocean. They must carefully check their equipment before diving, making sure to closely monitor their remaining oxygen levels. And knowing when to take action to get themselves to safety before they run out of the air they need to survive. And scuba divers operate on a buddy system. They never dive alone. So in this scenario, oxygen isn't something to think about as part of an emergency, but rather something that's part of your regular work and everyday practice. So before checking the news or social media, how much oxygen do I have in my tank? Is it nearly full or is it almost empty? What are the what are the habits that I've put in place to fill up the tank before I start working? How much oxygen will this activity cost me? How will I know when I've reached my limit? How much oxygen will I need to reach safety? What can I do to fill up the tank again once I'm at the surface? And who are my diving buddies? Who has the capacity to dive alongside me and support me when I'm in trouble? Who can I share the beauty of the world that I'm exploring? Who can I connect with after the dive to learn from the experience? So comparing the airplane and the scuba diver metaphors, they're both good metaphors, you know, in an emergency situation, it is important to prioritize your own health and wellbeing first so that you can take care of people later. But I also really like the scuba diver analogy because it it has more agency to it. So it becomes something as part of your daily work where you you monitor your own oxygen levels, you plan your activity around your available resources, you change course as need be, and you grow more skill through that experience. So why is it so important to take care of yourself, especially if you're, oh wait, no, sorry. So returning from those analogies, self-care refers to the activities and practices that we can engage in on a regular basis to reduce stress and enhance our health and wellbeing. Or more simply, self-care is taking time to take care of yourself. And I found that incorporating self-care into our everyday practice creates an armor to protect the energy that we need in order to to survive and thrive. And most importantly, self-care means knowing who you are and knowing what your limits are. And so it's so important to take care of yourself, especially if you're in a helping or people profession because you want to prevent burnout. So burnout is a state of emotional, mental, and often physical exhaustion brought on by chronic unmanaged workplace stress. Sometimes referred to as compassion fatigue. Burnout occurs most often in people who do people work. So not just library workers, but also priests, nurses, social workers, teachers, law enforcement, folks like that. The people that are most vulnerable to burnout are those who are highly people oriented, those who have high expectations for themselves, and those who place a lot of their identity and life satisfaction in their work. And at this point, you might be thinking that burnout is a lot like stress and stress can lead to burnout, but they are two different things. So stress is characterized by a sense of over-engagement, reactive or overactive responses, a sense of urgency and hyperactivity, lost or diminished energy, leading to a feeling of anxiety, it's physically tolling, and overall just a sense of too much. Burnout is different, being characterized by a sense of disengagement, blunted or distant emotions, a sense of hopelessness, lost or diminished motivation, leading to feeling depressed or a worsening of existing mental health conditions. It's emotionally tolling and where stress was about feeling too much, burnout is about not enough, like not enough energy, not enough resources to to deal with things. Another way to look at it is if stress is like drowning in responsibilities, burning is like just being dried out. So what are the signs and symptoms of burnout? So physically, it can look like feeling tired, drained, or exhausted most of the time, having lowered immunity, frequent illnesses, headaches, back pain and muscle aches, or dramatic changes in sleep or eating habits. Emotionally, you can see self-blame, hopelessness, and self-defeat. You might hear something like, I just don't care anymore, or I just can't do it, or I just can't. And the self-blame cycle of, you know, if I only did this, if I only tried harder, if I was only smarter, that kind of thing. Behaviorally, experiencing a withdrawal or isolation, using food, drugs, or alcohol to cope, and skipping work, coming in late or leaving early. That said, this list of burnout behaviors was created pre-pandemic. And I feel the need to list out a few totally normal responses to a global pandemic that don't need to be treated as abnormal. So it would be totally normal right now to have difficulty with food and eating, an increase in compulsive or addictive behaviors, obsessive or intrusive thoughts, generalized fear, panic, anxiety, and overwhelm, feeling confused, new and old grief surfacing, depression, disassociation, shutdown, and hopelessness, feelings of abandonment and loneliness, a sense of loss of control and powerlessness, anxiety around money, shelter, and food, past traumas being triggered, thinking about death and dying, heightened health anxieties, feeling anger, irritation, and frustration, hyper-focus, keeping doing to distract, feeling exhausted, lethargic and unmotivated, having flare-ups of chronic conditions, and caring for everyone to your own detriment. These behaviors are all normal right now because we are all currently experiencing a collective traumatic experience. Living through this pandemic itself is a trauma and it's important to put into perspective that our nervous systems are working really hard right now, barely coping with the sense of threat and constant vigilance for safety. As a result, we're not really able to fully process everything that's happening around us. And that's normal. Feeling somewhat numb and out of touch with your emotions is normal, especially if you've lived with, lived through a trauma before. In-depth processing of trauma often happens years later when we feel emotionally safe to deal with it. And so when we're in the midst of a trauma, just getting by emotionally and functionally is totally okay. And lowering expectations and being kind to yourself and others is really, really vital. And so is having compassion for your body and your brain as it works through these changes. So I've found a lot of comfort in therapists on social media lately. I don't know about anybody else. And this is one therapist who I've found on Twitter and Instagram, and she's been sharing some really helpful and useful advice, just basically explaining that, you know, we're doing the best we can and we're we're good no matter how we're managing through this thing. And so that's something that I'm constantly trying to to remind myself of. And so that leads me to the the meat and potatoes of this presentation, which is a set of 10 mental health tips shared by Dr. Bevy Raviola from the organization Partners in Health. Partners in Health is a nonprofit social justice organization focused on global health. They treat patients and train the next generation of local healthcare workers in some of the most remote and marginalized communities around the world. Dr. Bevy is the Director of Mental Health at Partners in Health, and he shared this list of key practices to maintain good mental and emotional health for those asked to stay at home to prevent further spread of COVID-19. These mental health tips are informed by people who have worked and lived through previous big disease outbreaks before, like Ebola, for example. So these tips come from a place of experience. Alright, so number one. Social distancing does not mean emotional distancing. Use technology to connect. We have to try to make every effort to connect digitally with other people as often as we can. It's important to maintain as much meaningful connection with family and friends as possible while we're physically isolated. Since I'm an introvert, I was really enjoying my alone time at first. At first. But then I've really come to value the the few socializing opportunities I have online. So here's some some tips that I've picked up over the past couple of weeks that I want to share with you. If you are in the Zoom chat, feel free to type in some examples of things that you've been using to connect with others. So one thing that I've found right lately is something called House Party, which is an app for devices and also for laptops where you can have basically a group video chat with several different people, and it's not only a video chat, you can also play games together. So I was playing games and having video chats. I was playing trauma, not trauma. I was playing trivia with my mom the other day in House Party, and there's plans to have a family dance party over House Party this weekend. Another app sort of similar to that is Marco Polo where you record voice memos to each other and send them back and forth like a Marco Polo. And then, you know, classic phone calls, texts, instant messaging. I've been keeping up with a lot of distant friends on Facebook Messenger lately, so that's been really fun. And then one other thing that I've been using is Minecraft Realms. So I I'm a gamer, I play Minecraft, and I actually started playing Minecraft Realms to keep playing with family members that we moved away from. And so right now, my husband and I are playing with one of our cousins and then my brother and my nibbling as well. So it's it's a really fun time. Yeah. So number two. Keep clear routines and schedules seven days a week, but don't go overboard. The the loss of structure and routine in my workday has been really, really difficult for me in this time. It's funny how there's there's nothing sacred about getting Taco Bell breakfast on my way into the office, but without it, there's just this small hole in my heart because it was really part of my daily routine. So now the goal is to create new routines and stick to a schedule, but within reason. And this is a delicate dance. Some structure is good, too much structure can be overwhelming. So here's some tips. Try to schedule short breaks for yourself throughout the workday when you're working from home. I, this was something I was struggling with even in the office, was making sure to take my breaks. And so I'm having to be even tougher on myself while I'm working from home. Don't try to schedule every moment, just sketch out blocks of time. Be kind to yourself if you don't meet the schedule that you set. I think a lot of folks set out to to have this quarantine period and, you know, learn a couple new languages or trying to schedule out every free moment of their time. And it's it's kind of better to just give yourself more free time and give yourself permission to not be that productive. And this also means setting boundaries. So having clear boundaries between your your work and your home is hard, and it was hard before, but now it's even more important to maintain those boundaries, and that can go with scheduling. So what I've done is I've effectively scheduled two four-hour blocks of time that I've reserved as as working time. And if I flex in and out of that, and if I take a long walk in somewhere, then I can flex that time out. But outside of those four-hour blocks of time, I don't touch work. I I close the laptop, I put it away, and I don't even sit at that seat unless I'm working. So so having those clear boundaries in your schedule can go a long way. Number three, exercise and physical activity daily if possible. It's really hard when we're sad or scared to exercise, but I know that when I do, I always feel better, always. And by exercise here, I mean going for a walk, dancing around your living room, doing some yoga, easy stuff. If going to the gym is your form of self-care, then absolutely go for an at-home workout routine. But for the rest of us, often going for a walk is is the easiest thing to do. And really, walking is an effective way to process and deal with anxiety. Even a 10-minute walk can help to relieve anxiety and elevate a depressed mood. And I even found some research to back this up. So psychologists say that a 10-minute walk can be just as good as a 45-minute workout for relieving anxiety and depression. Regular exercise can work as well as medication to reduce symptoms of anxiety, depression, and the effects can be long-lasting. And it in and having a regular schedule of exercise can help significantly reduce those symptoms over time as well. And so I recommend going on at least one walk a day if you can. If you want to avoid contact with your neighbors, mornings and evenings are a great time to get out for a walk when there's not that many other people outside. Number four, learning and intellectual engagement, books, reading, and limited internet. So this is about occupying your mind with healthy distractions. It is really hard to focus for me in this pandemic. So I've been avoiding the more thinking-heavy things and leaning more towards fun distractions. And I know I said here, limited internet, and I even underlined limited, so you knew how serious I was. But I'm going to recommend a couple YouTube channels because that is learning and intellectual engagement. So the first one is the the Bon Appetit Test Kitchen channel. If you haven't watched their videos yet, I recommend that you try it. They're great. They've even started a Working From Home series where all of the people in the test kitchen are showing you their home kitchens because they're working from home. It's great, it's delightful. I recommend the Gourmet Makes series or the It's Alive series. Another one is marble racing. I don't know if you've heard about this corner of the internet yet, but on YouTube, there is a large contingent of fans from all the marble racing. And it's actually very interesting. I highly recommend it. Jelly's Marble Runs is one of the better ones, but there are many, many different marble racers on YouTube. So I recommend you check it out. Another one that I recently found is this channel called Odd Tinkering where this guy, he finds random technology that's broken. Usually he gets it for free or for super cheap, and he meticulously takes it apart and restores it and puts it back together. There's no talking in the videos, so it's very relaxing and mesmerizing, and it's very satisfying to see something be taken apart and put back together again, and it works. So those are my three recommendations. And video games count for learning and intellectual engagement, video games, books, reading, YouTube, movies, that kind of thing. Number five is positive family time, working to to counter negativity. So spending time with family, whether virtually or in person, is an important way to counter negativity. This could be with family walks, board games, card games, or a group dance party in person. If you're hanging out virtually, just phone calls, video calls, group video calls are really fun, like with the House Party app I was talking about, or Google Hangouts. And then virtual gaming. There's many different ways that you could do that, like I was doing Minecraft or that House Party app I mentioned previously. You can play games in that with with the other people in the call. So number six is alone time outside if possible, but inside is okay too, but don't isolate. For being as as isolated as we are, I'm finding that it's very difficult to get quality alone time. And I imagine it's even harder for those of us that have kids at home. So even though it might be really hard, my recommendation is to try to carve out 10 to 15 minutes each day of alone time. And this should be 10 to 15 minutes without being productive, just doing nothing. You can go for a walk. Also, alone time wouldn't be just sitting in an empty room looking at social media for 15 minutes. So I do recommend a walk or a bath could be another great time for alone. So I do recommend a walk or a bath could be another great time for alone time. If you have recommendations for rejuvenating alone time activities that, that you've utilized lately, feel free to share those in the chat. Number seven is focused meditation and relaxation. So structuring in opportunities to relax in your day is a great way to maintain your emotional and mental health. I am not a meditation person, but I have been finding it really useful to keep a journal during this time. It's, you know, it leads back into that scheduling thing, so I, I've built in this little period of time every day where I kind of reflect on what's happening and then I can close the journal and move on with my day. And that's been really useful for me. Other things could be making art, coloring with coloring books, music making, or a meditative evening walk. Number eight, bathe daily if possible. So sure, we're not going into the office or getting within six feet of each other. But bathing daily is a really helpful routine to maintain during this time. And not only is practicing good hygiene important for pandemic reasons, but it will also help you feel better emotionally. Number nine, remember the things that you really enjoy doing, that you can do in this situation and find a way to do them. We are living in a new reality and, and many of the things that we used to have fun doing aren't available, available to us as they once were. But there's still a way to do some of those things. I've heard a lot about folks hosting virtual happy hours as a way to replicate that, that regular experience of hanging out with your friends at a bar. There's also the opportunity to create unique experiences at home. So if, for example, you always go out for Chinese food on Fridays and you're really missing that experience, you could order a bunch of Chinese takeout food and then make a bunch of green tea at home to sort of supplement that experience. Or you could really go all out with a movie watching experience, like make fancy popcorn, dim the lights, the whole thing. Netflix Party is also an app that lets you watch shows and movies simultaneously with friends virtually. So that's something that, that you could do. And then I've also heard of folks playing D and D and other role-playing games, board games or card games over video calls. And then this is a great opportunity to, to find some virtual communities. So number 10 is limit your exposure to TV and internet news. Choose small windows and then cleanse yourself of it. This is an important one and it's really hard. Of course, it's important to stay up to date on the news, especially important findings related to COVID-19 and how to keep ourselves and our community safe. But mental health experts say that watching too much bad news can take a toll on your psyche. So try to seek out non-sensationalized news that objectively offers helpful advice. I'd also recommend reducing watching TV news overall. And if you're looking for like a daily news update, just to keep in the know of things, try to find some kind of daily news aggregator website or a newsletter or an app that can give you a brief update of what's going on without giving you a lot of the drama. And then I also recommend trying not to consume any news after five or six o'clock because you don't want to take that anxiety to bed with you. It's kind of like gremlins, you know, they multiply after a certain time at night. So I've been looking at this list of 10 tips for a couple of weeks now, and I've found it really helpful when I'm feeling overwhelmed or scared or sad or isolated to look at this list and ask myself what I can do right now, and then I go and do it. And it helps. Often that's usually going for a walk or taking a shower, but those are two things that I've accomplished and I've checked off the list. And I've effectively convinced myself that doing things on this list is being productive, which is a great trick. I recommend it. Taking care of myself is, is the productivity that matters the most right now. So I know that's a lot to throw at you. I have some final thoughts to leave you with. You are not working from home, you are at home during a crisis trying to work. I've seen this several times on the internet, couldn't find a source for it, but I feel like it's a very, it's a good mantra to have right now. Your own physical, mental and emotional health is far more important than anything else right now. You should not focus on being productive during this scary and surreal time. You do not need to compensate for lost productivity by working longer hours. You will be kind to yourself and not judge how you are coping based on how you see others coping. And you'll be kind to others and not judge how they are coping based on how you are coping. Okay, I know I just threw a whole lot of information at you, but this is the end of the presentation. And so this is a great time to get some questions answered. And yeah.
Annie, this is Dina.
Hi, Dina.
Hello. I've been monitoring the chat and the Q and A and yay. And there's a question that we had come up about the idea of, a couple of people really liked the idea of blocking off a couple of four-hour chunks the day to kind of help set some of those boundaries. One person said, with scheduling, setting a couple of four-hour blocks of time aside, sounds great. How do you make this work if your employer is requiring you to keep your normal work hours? Any thoughts on that?
Ooh, that's a good question. Um, I mean, I, I guess these, the four-hour blocks that I've implemented are pretty similar to what my regular working schedule was. So that's a, a little bit of a privilege that I have in that area. Maybe instead of four-hour blocks, it's two-hour chunks. So that could more easily fit into a more ambiguous schedule or a more set schedule. Yeah, I guess my recommendation would be to try, try to block off smaller chunks when you can't block off larger ones.
Excellent. Thanks. Hopefully that answers that question or gives the person that asked it some ideas. And if other people have ideas of how to maybe address that, feel free to put them in the chat. I would also say it might be worth having a one-off conversation with your employer. I know a lot of folks are at home trying to balance a lot of things all at once that normally would not be having to be happening simultaneously, thinking about trying to manage childcare and having kids in school, but in school at home while also potentially working from home. And perhaps having a one-on-one conversation with your employer about ideas of how you could manage that rather than having it at an organizational level. Not only helps protect your privacy, but might allow your employer to have a little more flexibility versus coming up with a policy that gets applied to everyone.
That's great, Dina. Thank you. That, that was awesome.
There, there were a couple of people that were asking about all of the links and great ideas that were in the chat. And I just want to verbally reassure everyone that we are capturing those. And Annie, I imagine there's some way that when we send out the recording that we can make sure that those links are captured and shared out as well.
Yes, yes. All of the people who registered for this event will get an email probably within a week that'll have a link to the archived recording and then all of the resources that we shared as well.
Any other questions? Let's see, I'm not seeing any, I'm just scrolling through the chat. I'm not seeing a whole lot. Lots of people doing creative pursuits, which I think is a great way to, to stay connected. Let's see, someone's asking if there will be a certificate of completion for having joined this webinar.
Um, no, we generally don't issue certificates of completion for info-to-go webinars. But if you're interested in those, we do have a set of continuing education courses called Able, A B L E. And those courses will give you a certificate at the end of them.
I will go find the link to those and put it in there.
Thank you, Dina.
I might be racing Tammy to the link, we'll see.
Seeing a lot of folks in chat mentioning how great it is to have dogs or cats with them. And oh my gosh, yes, that has been really the saving grace for me is having, having my dog and my three cats around and being at home, I get to discover like what they do during the day. And it's, there's a very important time in my house at 11:00 in the morning when it's maximum sunshine time. When all the different critters have found a nice sunbeam in the house. And so that's, that's amazing. That's been a great thing.
Do we have any other questions? Go ahead and type them in the chat. As Annie mentioned, we will be sending a link out to this recording within a week to answer Rose's question specifically.
I'll add that one of the things that we have been doing in our office is we have a daily hangout, which has been a really informal gathering of whoever has free time at that time during the day to jump on a video chat. And it has been a great way to stay connected with staff, colleagues and friends that you don't get to see anymore, maybe. And to kind of share even just like tips and tricks for having to navigate what it is to be working from home, what it is to be going grocery shopping nowadays. And also an opportunity to just kind of catch up on what everyone's working on. So if you, if you have the ability to do that with your staff, I would, I would highly recommend it.
In the chat, Jamie mentioned that she's having a hard time remembering to take breaks. And I so appreciate that Annie shared that. I think it's extremely important during this time, but also anytime at work to make sure that you do things like take your break and take care of yourself.
One easy way to try to remind myself to take breaks that I've tried doing is putting, setting up different alarms in my phone. But I, it's taken some time to find the right alarm sound. So it's not like an, oh no, bad noise, but, but like, oh, good noise. So that's taken some time to sort of get right. And I still haven't found the right noise yet, but, but I feel like that's a useful suggestion.
I think another thing that you could do is actually schedule it on their calendar so that it forces you to not schedule another meeting on top of it. And it, you know, adds a level of importance to it. So I think, you know, those kinds of things can be really helpful to get you back in a routine and keep you on schedule for doing things like taking a break or making sure that you leave work when it's the end of your eight hours.
Along those lines, I have my fitness tracker set up to vibrate if I've been sitting for more than two hours at a time is a nice way to use some of that technology that I was already using as a reminder to get up and move around a little bit.
We have a couple more comments in the Q and A. Camille has found that subscribing to her local paper and making that her main source helps her limit her news intake to a manageable level. So just sort of focusing in on one area. Susan asked a question about, you know, what about getting fully dressed every day? Do you, do you think that that helps?
Oh, I mean, yeah, partly it's part of a routine. But I haven't been wearing work clothes. I've been wearing like really comfy overalls and sweaters and things that I wouldn't necessarily wear to work, but I'm, I'm sort of getting a little gleeful feeling being able to wear at home. So, I mean, I kind of like the idea of just dressing up and whatever you want. I've seen photos of people online where they're pulling out prom dresses and crazy onesies that they'd never thought about wearing. And so it's a great opportunity to sort of try out your, your wardrobe.
Any other questions people have? Feel free to use the chat or the Q and A. Love all the suggestions in the chat box. We have someone who making face masks for their neighbors, which is a great way to put your maker skills to use and maybe use up some of that fabric that's been sitting around for a while. People using different devices to help them keep track of things. I think it's all, those are all great ideas. Any last comments for Annie? Before we let her go, take a break, maybe a walk.
I'm a big advocate for walks.
Yeah, it's great. Yeah, I like Emily's comment about getting involved in mutual aid efforts like sewing facial masks or we've seen so many libraries jump to finding ways to help their community, whether it's using their 3D printing to do that or organizing groups of people to come to aid in other ways. So Dina shared a great, a great link for that in the chat.
Yeah, if putting some of your creative tools and mental space to use is something that interests you, then I would highly recommend checking out Get Us PPE, which is a national effort to get PPE to healthcare providers across the US. There are also a lot of local efforts that are happening on this front, but, but since we've got people from all over the US, I wanted to share something that would hopefully be useful for, for all of you. So if you do have a maker space at your library or your university or a private maker space in your area, I would highly encourage you to reach out to them and see if they are working on an initiative at the local level. There's a question from Sandy about, is there a pattern for free crochet masks? My understanding is, is that the, most of the masks that are being suggested that people make currently need to be made with fabric because they, it is a tight enough weave to actually capture the particulates that are what we're trying to stop the spread of coronavirus with. And so I don't, I, I have not, in my researching, I have not seen any crochet or knit suggestions. They are all sewing projects with kind of cotton fabric.
And it looks like someone from Leighton County said that they've made a mindfulness techniques video that they posted on their Facebook page. That would be a, if if it's easy to get to that link, that would be a fantastic thing to share. But if I'm reading the, if I'm reading the correctly, I think that's the Leighton County library district. So that's likely coming from Moscow, Idaho, for those of you looking for that. Any last comments? Great. Some more great links showing up in the chat. Well, we would just like to thank everyone for joining us today. This is such an important topic. Thanks so much to Annie for making this a priority in all of the things that she is working on. She saw that, you know, this is something that, you know, in our agency, we we would like to be talking about more and has really taken a lead on on making sure that we're talking about this. And I appreciate so much for sharing this with us today. So thanks so much, Annie, and thanks, everybody. Look for a note from Annie within a week with links to review and feel free to share this webinar once you receive that. But otherwise, so long from sunny Boise, Idaho. Go forth and practice some good self care. Take your walks, take your breaks, take your showers, hug your dogs. Have a dance party. Do what works for you.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody for coming and have a good day.